Good evening, everybody, and welcome to Midland's regular council meeting Wednesday, November 8, 2023. It's 6:00 PM and I'll call the meeting order. Just let you know, we were had an in camera session that began at 4:00 PM ended around 4:00, 5:30, and we have some motions that come out of that. Just before we get going, I'll ask counsel if there's any declarations of conflict of interest in relation to the matters before us this evening. Seeing none. I have a motion here moved by councillor Emeritus. Oh, sorry, I forgot my my opening remarks. How I love reading from this plastic sheet. Sorry, folks, please bear with me. It is a something we need to do. I'd like to welcome you all to council this evening. It's great to have so many people in the flesh. The town of Midland recognizes is located on land, which is a traditional and treaty territory of the Nishinobik people now known as the Chipewa Tri Council comprised of the Bosley First Nation, Rama First Nation, and the Georgina Island First Nation. This territory is within pre-Confederation Treaty V and Treaty 16 and included in the Williams Treaties of 1923. The town of Midland recognizes it's located on land, which is traditional territory of the Huron-Wendat and the historic homelands to the Metis, and that our town is home to a large and diverse community of indigenous peoples. I now like to deliver the following safety message. Should the fire alarm activate, please exit the room in an orderly fashion and proceed to the evacuation assembly area, which is located in the upper parking lot. You can exit through the main entrance through the double glass doors, and make an immediate left and proceed out the front doors or through the secondary exit right here behind Councillor East. Up the stairs, check the door for heat for opening, and if it's safe, exit onto the second floor, turn right and proceed out the door in front of you. Washrooms are located on the second floor to the left of the seating area and an elevator is located just outside the main entrance. As Midland has a respectful workplace policy, anyone that exhibits violent or harassing behavior will be asked to leave. For anyone requiring a hearing assist device, something new here, please advise the clerk and she will arrange with our IT staff to provide you with the device. Council meetings are recorded via Zoom and are posted to the town's YouTube website. The meetings are also broadcast on Rogers TV Midland Channel 53 when available. And actually, now I'd just like to pass the mic over to Madam CEO for a moment. For a quick announcement, and we'll move into our moment of silent reflection.
Thank you, your worship. At this time, I'd like to thank and acknowledge Sue Stewart for her dedication to the town of Midland. Sue is retiring at the end of December and began her career with the town of Midland in 2015, where she worked in a shared position as executive assistant for both Midland and Penetangasheen Fire Departments. So thank you, Sue, for your eight years that you spent with the town and for all your many contributions and accomplishments during that time. So on behalf of the entire staff in Midland, we wish Sue all the best in her retirement and congratulations.
Thank you. Well said. I'd like to now ask you to join me in a moment of silent reflection. Thank you very much. We've already covered declarations of conflict or interests that are non-identified. So next I have a motion moved by councillor Emeritus, seconded by Deputy Mayor Cotton, that further to the verbal report of the deputy clerk and the confidential criteria based matrix provided at the closed session meeting of council held today, November 8, 2023 regarding appointments to various committees. Council hearing confirms the following appointments for a term consistent with the term of council. And that is to the new Simco Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee, the AAC, that we've opted to join since we were unable to stand up our own. And I'd like to congratulate Mr. Stephen Lauren to that appointment. And further, the administration he direct be directed to amend and repost respective committee and boards with the available appointments for this council term. We had this discussion in camera and Mr. Lauren is a successful candidate and we wish him all the best on the committee and look forward to inputs from the county about how to make our municipality even more accessible. Any questions or discussion around this motion for a call to question council? All those in favor? Any opposed? That is carried. Next, I have a motion moved by councillor Ball, seconded by councillor East, that council receives information and confirm the directions as outlined in the verbal update provided by the chief administrative officer and the legal and risk advisor at the closed meeting session of council held today, November 8, 2023 with respect to the 349 Lakewood Drive. We've had all our discussion in camera, unfortunately, so we can't have it in the public session. All those in favor? Any opposed? That is carried. All right, next I have a motion moved by councillor Pro, seconded by councillor Bald, that the contents of the regular council with closed session agenda for November 8, 2023 be approved as amended. Item 10.4.4 CSR 2023-89, the Town Official Plan Amendment Number One, Phase One Implementation. Administrative change to page 24 of the draft OPA number one by law to read as follows, land use compatibility study. And item 23.1 by law 2023 59 official plan amendment number one. Administrative change to page 15 of the OPA number one by law to read as follows, land use compatibility study. That's replacing previous language that said including D six guidelines. Before I call the question council, are there any? This is the only thing that was modified. Any comments, questions, concerns? All those in favor? Opposed? As carried. Next, I have a motion movement councillor Bald, seconded by councillor East, that the items and related recommendations contained within the November 8, 2023 consent agenda as consent items, having been considered by council, be adopted with the exception of the following two reports that have been pulled. Item 10.4.2 CSR 2023 85, 739 Bombay Road Property Disposition, and item 10 4 4 CSR 2023-89, Town Official Plan Amendment Number One, Phase One Implementation, which will be considered under section 17, Reports and Other Items Withdrawn from Consent Agenda for Council's Consideration, which includes presentations by consultants regarding report under consideration. This is the opportunity council that if there's anything that we're about to pass en masse through the consent agenda to just to quickly speak to anything that has yet to be pulled. Does anyone have any comments, concerns, commentary? Just get right down there. Okay, all those in favor? Oh, sorry. Sorry, councillor McDonald. Technically, we just called the vote on it, but please you got the mic. If you'd like some comments or questions, this is some more housekeeping right now.
Thank you. I just had a comment on the trail plowing report. I wanted to say, although I was disappointed that it's not feasible to plow Little Lake Park and Bay Shore Trails at this time. I appreciate and accept the explicit report. But I have two questions. Can I ask questions on it or not? Will the Little Lake Road Park continue to be plowed? That I know the paths won't be, but the road.
Through your worship, yes, the roadway will continue to be plowed as it has the last few years.
Okay. And I'll find out this answer to my second question on my own. It was just about the snowmobile trails, but that's fine. Thank you.
Very good. Based on the hands I saw that motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of those two pull items passed.
Yes.
All right. Next move by councillor McDonald, seconded by councillor Ball, the council resolve into the committee of the whole. All those in favor? And that's carried. I'll turn things over to Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, worship. Good evening, council, staff, guests in the audience and those watching outside to council. It's just been about one year since council came into acting on behalf of the community. So congratulations to council for that first year. It was on November the 16th. So anyway, we have a full agenda this evening. I'm going to begin by stating that item number 12. Public meeting or hearing, there is none this evening. But we do have presentations under number 13. The Fire Department Exemplary Service Award. I would like to have Mayor Gordon and Fire Chief Rino do the honors of presenting. So I'll leave it up to you gentlemen to continue here. Yes, Mr. Rino, you have the microphone.
Thank you, sir. Mayor and and council. It's we are here this evening to recognize a significant milestone for one of our career colleagues. The Governor General. Sorry, the Governor General of Canada's Fire Service Exemplary Service Medal is an is an award that's given to firefighters since the creation in August of 1985. It honors fire service members who have completed 20 years of service, where 10 of them were done in the performance of duties involving potential risk. Captain Jamie Marks is here this evening to receive that award. Captain Mark began his career in Calladon in December of 2002 as a volunteer firefighter. He worked in the in Station 301 Alton. In January of 2010, at that time, Captain Mark was firefighter Mark and was hired here in Midland as a recruit firefighter. In September of 2019, firefighter Mark at that time was promoted to captain. Captain Mark is involved in multiple disciplines within the fire service. He's the designated officer. He does our he's a worker representative for health and safety. He teaches pump ops. He does our fit testing to make sure our N95 masks and our SCBA masks fit properly and protect our firefighters. And he will soon be teaching our command program. Deputy Lowell and I were supportive of this application and very proud to be here this evening, surrounded by friends, family and colleagues as we present Captain Mark with the Federal Fire Service Exemplary Service Medal. Please join me in a round of applause for Captain Jamie.
For the folks watching along at home, we're just assembling for some quick photos. We've got all the fire service crew up here along with Captain Mark getting a photo. Will you guys get back to bed now or chilly or whatever it is we are doing? Yeah. We got some groans. Thanks, everybody. Thanks, chief.
Thank you, Chief Rito. Ladies and gentlemen, we will continue with the committee of the whole. We are now under number 14 Integrity Commissioner Recommendation Report. This evening we have none. Number 15 item. We have two deputations this evening. The first one is from the Midland Cultural Center. It's an update of operations. And we have Mr. Dan Broome to present this evening from MCC. Mr. Broome, we have 10 minutes for your presentation. And we will open it up for questions and for you or comments. And I appreciate you coming. It's good to see you, sir, again. And I'll give you the mic, sir. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, Mr. Mayor and members of town council for inviting us to present our deputation at this evening's town council meeting. Mr. Hagan sends his regrets. He's on his way to Boston this evening for work. I'm honored to stand before you today as we discuss a matter of great significance for the town of Midland and the North Simcoe Region, the Midland Cultural Center and nurturing a growing and sustainable arts and culture ecosystem in the North Simcoe Region. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Dan Broome and I serve as the Executive Director of Midland Cultural Center Incorporated. I would like to use my allotted time to highlight the critical role that the MCC plays in our community. Since its inception in 2012, the MCC has been a vibrant institution consistently contributing to the enrichment of our cultural fabric. It has played an integral part in fostering creativity, supporting local artists, and cultivating an inclusive arts and culture ecosystem. Next slide, please. The MCC located in the heart of Midland's downtown core is more than just a building. It's a community-based, volunteer-driven facility that encourages everyone to engage in artistic and cultural pursuits, whether as participants or as audience members. The MCC enhances the vibrancy and economic well-being of our entire region, serving as the focal point for cultural activities in the heart of Georgian Bay. This center was founded through the vision of local philanthropist Reinhard Weber and the generosity of the Weber Foundation. Notably, no public funds, be it federal, provincial or municipal, were used for its construction. The site was carefully chosen to maximize economic benefits for the community. Ownership was transferred to the corporation of the town of Midland and it was leased to the Midland Cultural Center, Inc., which operates the facility. Our governance structure includes a board of directors, which has and which has an ex officio board representative appointed by the corporation of the town of Midland. And all elected town council members hold voting membership within the Midland Cultural Center Incorporated organization and have the privilege and right to participate in our annual general meeting. The MCC serves as a as a dynamic hub for artistic expression, learning and community engagement. It hosts a diverse range of activities from visual arts to music, theater, dance and literary and culinary arts. Its state-of-the-art facilities include MCC, the MCC Rotary Hall Performance and Events Space, the HP Theater, Art Gallery Spaces and a Classroom. Collectively, these spaces provide a platform for artists of all ages and backgrounds to showcase their talents, collaborate and inspire each other. Next slide, please. We are deeply committed to arts education and lifelong learning. Our tenant partner Quest Art School and Galleries offers a wide range of workshops, classes and educational programs for individuals of all ages. This encourages the development of artistic skills and fosters a love for culture. By providing accessible and affordable arts education space, the MCC plays a critical role in nurturing the next generation of creative minds and fostering a lifelong appreciation of the arts. Operated solely by volunteers, tenant partner or Huronia players presents three plays a year. These community theater productions provide opportunities for those interested in theater productions and performances. With over 200 volunteers collectively supporting the MCC and our tenant partners, the Midland Cultural Center is a focal point for the community of volunteers who value helping to foster and grow the arts ecosystem in Midland and the North Simcoe Region. The MCC hosts numerous performances, exhibitions and cultural events throughout the year, providing entertainment for residents and visitors alike. It also serves as an economic catalyst for the local community, attracting visitors from near and far, boosting tourism and supporting local businesses, including restaurants, hotels and shops. It is a cultural landmark that enriches our community and enhances our quality of life. Next slide, please. The Midland Cultural Center actively collaborates with other local arts and culture organizations, creating a strong network and fostering a sense of community among artists and cultural practitioners. By working with organizations like Brookside Music Association, Georgian Bay Musical Theater Company, Huronia Players, Quest Art School and Galleries and others, the MCC strengthens the cultural ecosystem of our region, promoting a sustainable and vibrant arts scene. We also engage in collaborative efforts with other local nonprofit organizations such as Askanonia Senior Center and Big Brothers Big Sisters North Simcoe for events like the 2023 Intergenerational Drum and Ukulele Camp. Additionally, we provide valuable support to registered nonprofit organizations like the Waypoint Center by granting discounted event rental rates, enabling them to host high-quality annual fundraisers right here in town. Next slide, please. In the realm of arts and culture, municipal support is often a lifeline for cultural centers. When we look at our neighboring towns such as Aurelia, Meaford and Huntsville, each has its own approach to funding cultural hubs. For example, Aurelia's Opera House, despite its architectural beauty, benefits significantly from the town's investment. Meaford Hall, though modest in size, receives substantial municipal support that underwrites a significant portion of its operations. And Huntsville's Algonquin Theater with town contributions is a corner store of local culture and community engagement. In contrast, the MCC navigates with self-reliance even during the post-COVID era's upheaval. We remain resilient, supported by our community and internal resolve, despite the absence of municipal funding that our neighbors enjoy. However, as we continue to confront ongoing challenges, the necessity for a broader support network becomes even clearer to sustain the cultural vibrancy that enriches both Midland and North Simcoe. Next slide, please. In 2023, the MCC remained a vital hub for arts and culture in Midland and the North Simcoe Region, primarily through a variety of revenue sources. Our cultural events, activities, gallery sales, along with the support of our cultural partner tenants, have collectively contributed approximately $160,000 towards our overhead expenses. Next slide, please. Despite diligent cost management and lean operations, our total overhead expenses expenses for the year are projected to stand at roughly $470,000, including facility maintenance, staff and volunteer support. Next slide, please. We anticipate the remaining deficit, we anticipate a remaining deficit of approximately $35,000 for the year, plus the $40,000 CBL loan, which must be repaid back at the start of 2024. Next slide, please. This deficit is not merely a number. It represents the ongoing support we need to continue providing the valuable services and programs vital to the cultural heartbeat of our community. Next slide. Please. The presence of the MCC significantly enhances the economic vitality and community development of the town of Midland. Research consistently shows that investing in arts and culture generates substantial economic benefits such as job opportunities, increased tourism income and heightened property values. The MCC as an anchor to institution attracts visitors, artists and cultural aficionados to the area, catalyzing economic expansion and nurturing a sense of community pride. To conclude, the Midland Cultural Center is a crucial component of our community, nurturing and growing a sustainable arts and culture ecosystem in the North Simcoe Region. By providing a platform for artistic expression, supporting local artists and fostering collaboration and learning, the MCC and our tenant partners, Huronia Players and Quest Art School and Galleries contribute to the cultural vibrancy, economic prosperity and the overall well-being of our town. I implore you to recognize and support these invaluable contributions and continue as a community to prioritize the growth and development of the arts and culture sector in the town of Midland. Last slide, please. Thank you for your time and consideration. I would be pleased to provide any additional information or answer any questions you may have regarding the Midland Cultural Center and its impact on the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Broome, for your presentation and update for the past year. It was an honor to sit along with the mayor in one of your board meetings to get a better understanding of the MCC. And at that time, I think I picked up the fact that you're in transition still with COVID and I'm not quite sure when we will ever get out of that situation, but facing other communities who are offering the same service for the community, I'm sure they're feeling the crunch also. But you know, congratulate you on the work that you have been doing for the community. Counsel, I'll leave this open for you for any questions for Mr. Broome. Do we have any question? Councillor Ball?
Yeah. Thank you for your presentation. I agree. I think the Midland Cultural Center is a pillar for our community. I enjoy lots of events there. I'm wondering, you mentioned municipalities providing funding for Meaford, Aurelia and Huntsville. Can you tell me if that's funding in, I guess, subsidy for rent or lease? Or is that municipal funding going just directly to programming? Can you elaborate on that, please?
It's generally facility-based funding. It is to carry the cost of the facility. It's not generally tied to programming. Historically, programming dollars either come from rental fees at other times or through grants, sponsorship, et cetera. So normally the investment of the town or of the neighboring towns is to the center itself, to the facility, which they don't.
Supplementary?
Yes, thank you. Just to follow up to that, are those other places that you mentioned, do they receive that on top of a lease or rent subsidy? Or are they owners of a building that is paying taxes back to the municipality?
They are. They are the owners of the buildings, is my understanding. And so they are just like this situation where there's a group put in place to run those organizations from the programming aspect.
Thank you. I have Mayor Gordon.
Great. Glad to see you here. It was it was actually really good to be at that board meeting and to understand the pressures you're under. And the fact you're having success. We're looking at similar ventures floundering and going under, you know, symphonic orchestras that have been around for a century, just holding up shop. They just can't survive on Zoom. It's not the platform. And then even the the big theater outfits in Toronto with such a wide attractive base are still struggling to try and fill their seats. And you see that with discounts. I know I'm on some of the discount lists. So you the people that are wondering or maybe more critical, you know, what's going on with the MCC, why are why are they asking for, we've got our council, we already got the letter and we're going to beat this up at at our budget talks, but you know, how come we have to pay or being asked to pay for insurance again? That's really the only skin we have in the game. This this building was constructed through philanthropic efforts and given to us for a dollar. And as the owner of that building, although not the operator, we've been getting away really cheap with this amazing facility. So the plan originally, if I recall correctly, was a phased approach, whereas towards self-sustaining and those costs would be entirely made up through your operating revenues. And then COVID hit. And then you're struggling to survive again. And that's why, if I recall correctly, why you came back last year and then as we anticipated the renewed ask this year. But I just wanted to point out from being at the event center for all kinds of different events and looking at the caliber, caliber of the productions and and attending some of the Huronia Players productions and just talking to people that are there, just randomly just talking to people over a glass of wine after the event. There are people from all ages, all demographics, all sort of fluency levels, right? It's not just highbrow monkey mucks that are there. It's just regular schmoes like the rest, most of us are in Midland. And talking to them and asking them what what they think of the theater, what they think of the facility, its cleanliness. I mean, I really, we had great candid conversations and I have to tell you that consistently it's five star reviews from everybody that comes there. So my only challenge to you, just as I echoed at that meeting is how do we get more people who either think that there's a stigma that it's for, you know, snooty people only? Snooty people only and not for regular Midlanders? How do we get them into that amazing facility? And I think the wide variety of programming that you're continuing with this year is really more than a step in the right direction. You're you're actually jogging in the right direction. So. Here to be commended on that. I appreciate you updating counsel. And uh, I look forward to the discussion, um, although I don't look forward to the the budget number, but I look look forward to discussing the rationale behind that and and. You know, how trivial that ask really is when you consider the magnitude of the support that other other. Communities that have similar but nothing even closely resembling as nice as our facility. How much skin they have in that game. So thanks for coming and it's sort of affirming that, especially as we head over the the winter break and into our budget talks for January.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor and counselors. Thank you for the time.
Oh, I I have one more question, Mr. Brew. Sorry. I have Counselor McDonald who'd like to.
My apologies.
Question. That's okay. Uh, Counselor McDonald.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Cotton. Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Brew. And um, I heard, I thought I heard you say that council members have a voting right. Could you elaborate on that or did I miss here?
That's that's correct. By the nature of the organization, all of the elected town, all of the elected council members are are open to attend the annual general meeting and I, we appreciate. Uh, the mayor and the deputy mayor attending our AGM this year. And again, all all elected, the elected, the elected members of council. Represent the membership of the AGM organization along with appointed board members. So when we have our AGM, the council is always more than welcome to come out and and at the AGM and and participate.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
You're very welcome.
Miss an opportunity to vote, you know? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brew, for your presentation. We're going to continue, uh, ladies and gentlemen, we're now on to deputation number two. Uh, it's One World Music Festival. That's an overview of the twenty twenty-three event. I'd like to invite Mr. John French to present to council. Mr. French, you have. The microphone, you have ten minutes and we'll leave it open for questions after. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity of of presenting to you this evening. It seems to be the evening for arts and culture. In your town council. It's hard for me to believe that Brookside Music is entering now its fifteenth year. Of bringing exceptional music and educational events to Midland. Over the course of those fifteen years, it has evolved into an organization. That operates with four streams of activities, which are the Summer Festival of the Bay. The Year-Round Brookside Presents Series. Educational Events in Schools. And as of this past summer, the One World Music Festival. And it's this last event that I'm here to talk to you about tonight. In twenty twenty-two, as we were emerging from the pandemic, Brookside partnered with the Midland Cultural Center. To present a small cabaret series of world music. This was funded by Canadian Heritage through Ontario Presents. And involved the creation of a cohort of other presenters and included attendance at various world music conferences. That year, I also focused on world music in the Summer Festival of the Bay concerts, which were held outdoors. And those concerts attracted larger-than-normal audiences and sparked the idea for me of creating a weekend world music festival here in Midland. I was fortunate through Ontario Presents. Uh, through that program to have made the acquaintance of Alfredo Caxage, who is the founder and the artistic director of Sunfest. That festival is now in its twenty-ninth year. And has grown from very humble beginnings to a four-day event which attracts two hundred thousand people to London, Ontario. It is largely due to that event that London, Ontario has been designated a World Music City by UNESCO. And it is the only city in Canada to have that designation. Alfredo was a great inspiration and provided advice and encouragement to me as I started working on planning a festival for Midland. He attended and spoke at the festival in Midland last August and was extremely impressed with the event and its potential. I have to say there was quite a learning curve involved in organizing such a festival. And I was extremely fortunate to have the help and support of the members of the Brookside Board. And some other volunteers, as well as the town staff in the Culture and Tourism Department who assisted in many ways. I'm not sure if anyone other than the mayor was at that festival, so at this point. I'd like to show you a video that was prepared with funding from Simcoe Tourism that will assist in our promotion for next year's festival. The video shows the key elements of the festival, which were a diverse lineup of various types of world music performances. Ethnic food vendors, artisan booths, and the children's activity area. What the video doesn't show is the torrential rain, thunder, and lightning and tornado warnings that were experienced in the morning. Yet despite that, the weather cleared just afternoon and the festival went ahead as planned. And the feedback on the questionnaires that were returned by attendees, volunteers, and performers was overwhelmingly positive. Expressing the hope that this can become an annual event. More importantly, the festival generated a small profit. Of particular interest is the fact that I've been contacted by the Cycling Club in Toronto. Who wanted to know the dates for next summer as they want to include the festival on their summer cycling tour. This provides a segue to what is written in the town's official plan, in which the importance of arts and culture and tourism are addressed. Quoting from the plan, arts and culture contribute to a successful community and enhance the quality of life for Midland residents. The town recognizes that arts and culture bring many benefits to the town. Arts and culture contribute to the town's economy, cultural landscape, quality of life, vibrancy, livability, and sense of place. In addition, the town acknowledges that tourism brings economic benefits to Midland. And that a strong tourism industry also contributes leisure, entertainment, cultural, recreational, and hospitality services for residents. And helps to attract new residents, businesses, and industry. The current list of festivals and events on the town's website include the Butter Tart Festival and Cycle Trail. The Tugboat Festival, a kids' fishing derby, and the Canada Day celebrations. Clearly, there is room for many more activities and events to help the town derive the benefits identified in their official plan. As Brookside was working on the launch of the World Music Festival, we faced some restrictions, particularly in promoting the event and in soliciting vendors and artisans to participate. This was because it was not considered a town event, so it couldn't be included in the town's marketing efforts. And vendor information was considered confidential. I'd like to emphasize that the festival is a community event that aligns perfectly with the points noted in the town's strategic plan. My request, therefore, is for the town to embrace the festival and to partner with Brookside to make this a significant part of the region's cultural landscape. With the potential to become a major contributor to tourism. Support from the town would include allocation of town staff to assist with promotion and vendor solicitation. This fits perfectly within the processes already in place for the Butter Tart Festival, and in fact, it could be done concurrently. Also, inclusion on the town website and promotional materials would represent town support, as would operational support in the setup and teardown of the festival. My long-term vision for the festival is to grow from a small, single-day event such as was held last year. To a larger, multi-day and multidisciplinary event, which would be a celebration of world culture through the arts. In addition to music, the festival could also include dance, literary readings, drama, and other activities and workshops. My vision is to fill Little Lake Park with vendors and artisans, with performance stages at each end of the park, and to use other indoor venues throughout the town. I believe this is more than possible if done strategically over the next few years. And it would elevate Midland on the province's cultural map. With respect to funding for the festival, Brookside has established very strong relationships with the various granting agencies. And in fact, was invited by Canadian Heritage to apply for a special grant made available by invitation only for next year's festival. This is very encouraging and having held a successful launch. We have what we could consider a proof of concept which positions the festival well for undertaking additional fundraising activities for next summer. By working with Brookside, the town will be able to indirectly share in the funds we receive to create what can become a flagship event for the community. To summarize, the One World Music Festival is a unique event with tremendous potential to achieve the objectives laid out in the town's strategic plan. The successful launch is only a glimmer of the future potential for this festival. I hope you agree and that together we can create a festival that is as important to Midland as Sunfest is to London. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak and if there are any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Uh, thank you, Mr. French, for your presentation. Uh, requesting more involvement by the town and community is fantastic. So are there any questions from counselors this evening? On Mr. French. Mayor Gordon.
Thanks. The last time I saw you was a karaoke, but you might be doing a song for us when you got near the mic. Um, I it's true, that was a really amazing day. Uh, the weather was a real challenge. Uh, but nonetheless, the turnout was great. It turned out to be beautiful and was widely, you know, well-reviewed. You can, just from talking to people after the fact. So I I think the request to partner with the town, um, clearly they're even in kind, there's financial impact to that. And that would be something we need to consider, uh, not only at budget time, but we need to get staff to report back on whether they had the capacity. You know, and quite frankly, the best, my best advice for you would be to prepare a list of what it is you'd be looking for. Aside from, you know, the generic partnership of the town. If it's uh, foregoing rental of the new stage that's gonna, we have the new seating on that we just installed and there will soon be a roof over that rotary stage. If it's foregoing rental revenues, that's one thing. If it's actually assigning staff or operations teams. Uh, or needing tables, chairs, uh, you know, cash to help pay for security, other things like that. Those need to be costed by our staff to see whether we have the capacity, what the financial impact would be, and whether that would. Draw away from efforts for things that we already um, do support with a very small but mighty capable culture team. So I think my my advice to you, because we're really quickly heading into budget times. Would be to prepare, um, you know, a costed in your estimated costed ask of the municipality of what kind of services, whether they be in the in-kind column. We'd figure out what that value really is. Or, you know, in a direct contribution column. And that could come as a uh, basically a request to council to consider during our budget time. So that would need to come into us. I would say by our next, um, but our next council meeting, which is December sixth or something, it's early December. And if council supports, um, putting that into the ask of staff, then it will appear there and will be deliberated for next year. If that's a bit rushed, which it may be, then, uh, you know. We we'd look at, you could put your request in as you did last time into our community grant stream for twenty twenty-four. And uh, we can consider that uh, for twenty twenty-four with the possibility of working towards something. Um, you know, more significant contribution-wise for twenty twenty-five and beyond. That would give everyone more time rather than trying to rush this through. That would probably be the path I see as being the best one for you, but ultimately leave the timing in your hands because we do have one more meeting in this calendar year. What are your thoughts on that?
Um, I'm just wondering what would be the the method of costing staff time? Cause I I think the biggest help to us would be to have someone from your department. On the committee that's planning the festival and engaging in the in the solicitation of vendors and artisans. When they send out the material for the Butter Tart Festival. I just include that in that solicitation and then they would apply and and um. And be present at the at the World Music Festival as well. Versus us recreating the wheel and and sending it out separately. And all and also like cooperating to the extent of giving us the list of vendors if 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 that's the only. The extent of the involvement so that we know, you know, a much broader selection of vendors that we can approach. But it's it's the it's the time in in the planning and and the process of doing the vendor solicitation. And including us on the town's website and in the promotional materials that were, I guess, we don't have a mirror any longer, but the things that showed up in the mirror, we were told. It couldn't be represented there because it wasn't a town event. Which is the the rationale behind being a partner in the in the festival.
Okay, so all of those things would have to come in the direction of council and they'd need to be costed at a time. Because we know what staff's, you know, hourly wages and they would know, their supervisors would know how many hours per week or month they would have to spend on this. And that would come back to us in a a report, basically, and also the feasibility of whether this project feels mature enough for us to embrace as a municipality. Uh, yet, or do we want to continue to have this public-private uh, partnership as we do with a lot of these events that come to town? Or we play a, you know, very minor role, but we still either provide in-kind funding or some other model. So. If you could prepare a basically a business case. And get that to uh, either myself or uh, yeah, you can send it to me if you'd like. And then we can get that on the agenda in December if you're ready for it. If not, we can do it in the next new year. In anticipation of flushing this all out over twenty twenty-four and being ready. You know, if we all agree that it's worthwhile for twenty twenty-five. Send that into me and I'd be happy to navigate it through the process and get it before council on an agenda for for consideration.
Would it be reasonable to speak with, say, Karen Neeling to find out the time that she would um. Think is reasonable to to assign to this? If I give her an outline of what it is we would like from the town, she would have a better idea how long it would take them to uh, to do those functions.
It seems reasonable to me. I mean, Karen managed their calendar and her time. Uh, Madam CEO, do you have any comment or or guidance for Mr. French?
Through you worship. No, if you if you would like to um. Send actually some information through to the clerk as well, we can actually definitely. Connect you with Karen or if you want to know Karen and want to speak to her directly, that's not an issue.
Okay, well, maybe I'll speak with Karen and then send something to all of you. That would uh, probably be the best solution.
Thank you, Mr. French, for that. And Mayor Gordon, I have another question from Counselor McDonald.
Thank you, uh, Deputy Mayor Cotton. Thank you, John, or excuse me, Mr. French. Uh, for your dedication and I share your enthusiasm with the prospects of making this a town event. I regret that I was out of town, so I didn't get to personally experience it, but I did hear positive feedback. So hopefully we can. Help expand on um, making it. Not um, a weekend of one world music, world worldwide known. So we'll be in touch. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Counselor Ball.
Thank you. Sandra, thank you for your presentation. I'm really impressed that you were able to gather. So much hype for one year and be able to actually come back and have the Cycle Trail approach you to get put on their list of places to visit. I think that's amazing for one year of just having this festival. It looks really well-attended. I was sad to not be able to attend this year due to prior commitments, but if you need somebody to hand out flyers for next year, call me. I will do that.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no more questions. Mr. French, thank you very much for updating us on the work that you're doing and very valuable for the community. It's good to see a fantastic artist coming to town. Um, and wish you the best in the twenty twenty-four. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, council, we're moving on to. Item number sixteen. item number sixteen. The Committee Local Board Delegation or Memo. There is none this evening. So we will move on to item number seventeen. Reports and other items withdrawn from the consent agenda for council's consideration includes presentations by consultants regarding a report under consideration. Uh, we have two items this evening. And I have motions for these, which I'll read. I, I do need a mover in a, a secondary. Do I have a mover? Councillor East? Second here? Councillor Marins? I will read the motion. That staff report D S R twenty twenty-three dash eighty-five, seven thirty-nine, Bond Beach Road property disposition dated November the eighth, twenty twenty-three be received. And that council deemed seven thirty-nine Bond Beach Road as surplus property. And that staff be directed to issue a request for proposals for the sale of the property. You heard the motion, council. I will open this up for questions. We do have staff to answer the technical questions if it's required. So I will open this up. Are there any questions? With this, I have councillor McDonald. Councillor McDonald?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, uh, Cotton. Um, so the report states that the use and zoning for the property was changed with the adoption of the town official plan in twenty twenty-one to natural heritage. The site will therefore require significant environmental review and planning justification to change the land use and zoning for any type of housing or institutional development. It could be developed in a timely manner if the land use can be changed from its natural heritage designation. So my question is, why would we not address changing the official plan before we proceed with the request for proposal? Wouldn't that be more attractive to developers if the voting, excuse me, the zoning wasn't correct for building affordable housing before the proposal to sell goes out?
I thank you, councillor McDonald. Ask one of our staff, Mr. Campbell, you have the floor?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, to councillor McDonald. Uh, yes, if a property has proper zoning, it is worth more money when you go to market. Or in the report, we've had requests from uh, agencies that are uh, for supportive housing units, affordable housing units, uh, uh, land lease, uh, trailer park use, and then of course, uh, the uh, a, a regular type subdivision, and then whether we would use it for an emergency services uh, uh, campus. Uh, the, the challenge is, uh, that would represent uh, two or three different types of zoning. So how can you, how could we change the zoning today? Not knowing who the, what the actual use is. So we could go through and make a zoning for, for one use. Uh, but then if it needed an institutional use to be supportive housing, uh, then that would need to be rezoned. Uh, secondly, uh, it's, it's about timing and trying to capture the interest of, of some of the parties that are, are, are there today. If, if uh, council directs staff to go and do the rezoning, uh, uh, we, our planning department is busy as it is. We'll get to it. It'll be a couple of years, and then we might start to engage vendors uh, or purchasers. Uh, there might, the ones that are interested today might not be there tomorrow. Also, the ones we've been talking to on their other development projects have had to go through the development approval process themselves anyway. So they're used to, to doing that. And in some cases, if it's uh, affordable housing or supportive housing, they might be requesting the province for an M Z O, and that's better coming from the developer than from the town. Uh, although town would certainly uh, need to support uh, an M Z O to make it successful. So the requests of staff here is, let's go to market and find somebody and then work uh, jointly to get through whatever planning process we need to, to get the right designation. So this is around speed from the financial side. Uh, as I mentioned, if it's properly zoned, it might be worth more. But as we know, if we're talking about affordable housing, or we're talking about supportive housing, or we're talking about a campus, we're not going to get market value anyways, I believe, because council would be requested to be, I presume, and in other situations, uh, giving discounts to property and everything else. So I don't think, uh, trying to uh, adjust the zoning to maximize market value. If council's interested in supportive housing or affordable housing, uh, you know, those are different uh, requests. So uh, right now, the administration believes this will get uh, us to engage some interested parties, try and get some housing and some zoning started as quickly as possible. Or should I say, if council wants us to leave it and only investigate uh, emergency services campus, then we, that's a whole different direction. That would be a, uh, fully on our plate to uh, pursue.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Campbell. Uh, supplementary, this councillor McDonald, or I, you have a question? Follow up?
Yes, please. Um, so the, the interested parties wouldn't be deterred by the fact that it would require rezoning is what I'm hearing.
Mr. Campbell?
My understanding, through you, Mr. Chair, uh, from the uh, parties that I've talked to, they have had to go through rezoning processes in uh, Forma Dante and Tay as, as an example, uh, for their developments, uh, for supportive housing. And then uh, the affordable housing, uh, people, again, they, they'd be, you know, trying to get us to help them along as much as possible. But again, uh, our staff time commitment uh, is such that we require the applicant to hire their own planners, go through the process, and we'd be the approval agency.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Campbell. Are there any other questions?
I may be so bold.
Oh, I'm.
To suggest that.
Follow up? Right.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I'm just gonna be so bold to suggest that we, they speak clearly into the mic, cause it's hard to hear sometimes when you're um, Zoom. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. So you heard the que, the response then from Mr. Campbell? Was that okay? Want him to repeat?
No, I did hear the response, but
Okay.
And I turned up. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. I have now Mayor Gordon.
Thank you. I'm, I'm glad we got a chance to speak to this, um, because it's important the public know what we're doing with this land. This land was acquired in the previous council term, um, at, at the output of the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee that former Mayor McKay uh, was sort of heading up. And the acquisition was intended for a submission to the county for what I call the Affordable Housing Lottery, you know, where we, different intake streams happen, and we would submit the, the property to the county, effectively gift them the land, and then we don't get development charges from that either. And then the county, if we won that housing lottery, would build affordable housing on that property. It, we couldn't do that, um, well, for a few reasons, but it just didn't happen. And then COVID hit. So we've been sitting on this parcel of land that we picked up for a pretty decent price. As it stands now, all the land around it, which, you know, if you look down from above on Google Earth, you'll see trees. That's all owned by developers who are, who are, will be bringing plans of subdivision to us. That whole corridor that we've serviced up Bond Beach Road has attracted a lot of development interest. So if you look at the plots of land on the county GIS system, you'll see our, our rectangle that we own right smack in the middle of all this other land going almost right to the boundaries of Midland that are owned by developers that have plans to develop housing in our community. Is it any of it deemed affordable housing? No, nothing I've heard of yet. Which in a way is a blessing, because it means it doesn't trigger the DC forgiveness, which means all of us have, you know, have to subsidize uh, all of the connections. So the meetings that we have had, and there's been several that I've been involved in, um, because it's quite traditional for the mayor to sit in with the developers and they come in and we'll talk about what land is available in the community and what they want to do and what they want to grow. We have these meetings, of course, with staff, and we've had at least three, I think if not four, developers come in keenly interested in this parcel of land, asking, you know, would we consider surpassing this and putting up for sale? Clearly, one of them is somebody who might actually own the property that is around it, and they've got ideas on building even more homes in there. And these are towns, these aren't like sprawling estate lots. We've had other developers that are interested in life lease style things, which would be affordable in the sense that the small home you build, you don't own the land, which makes it very easy to get a mortgage, call it a two hundred thousand dollar house, right, rather than eight hundred thousand dollars. Uh, but they would never own the land. So it would be affordable, but that wouldn't trigger affordable uh, rebates under the Bill twenty-three. So like, that's a win-win. Those are affordable, small homes in a community. So we've had all this interest, and we had another institutional one that if I talk about it, it'll, it really would give away probably who it was. We've had institutional investment, um, looking to build something incredible that would employ some two hundred well-paid jobs in our community. And they'd like to look at that land. But again, step one is to surplus the land, which then unlocks staff's ability to look into rezoning or whatever we need to do to market that land to get it for sale, just as we've done with the parking lot downtown, just as we did with the William Street piece of land. So this, this is one of these ones where we, we held on to it for a specific purpose, and it looks like we're not going to use now. Because we really, it, it isn't suitable, and we could turn that land's value exponentially to the benefit of the Midland residents and ratepayers, either as employment. Um, if it's an institutional person that ends up buying it and developing, or is desperately needed housing in our community. None of which, except for one plan, which even though it's pitched to us, doesn't mean they'll actually do it, would be affordable, but not triggering those expenses that, you know, were now downloaded to us from the province. So this is a really exciting opportunity and uh, but it does still feel kind of a key, ooh, or surpassing more land in the town. And, you know, on its face, it might look like we're just doing it for some quick cash, but nothing could be further from the truth. This is unlocking the potential of this land with developers that are interested now. So this isn't hypothetical, this is now ethical. If that's a word. So at any rate, I'm, I'm glad this has come up. It's uh, it makes sense. It's the logical conclusion to a bunch of conversations we've had with developers. And Mr. Campbell, you've got some more input on this.
Uh, you, you're worship through you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, it, this is going to be an interesting request or proposal. I listed in the report that, you know, given the agencies that might be looking at this land, and it, it isn't about the value of the property versus what's the value to the community. So these submissions would, of course, we'd be expecting them to offer something for the, the land, but also talk about, you know, the number of housing units, the number of jobs it might create. Uh, the timing, you know, who can do something sooner than, than later. Uh, you know, their, their history of building these types of developments. Uh, one developer, uh, uh, you know, has done the same uh, development or Medante and, and Tay, and, you know, still has a high need for providing the service to a certain clientele and wants to bring it, that into the community. Uh, so I, this RFP will be, tell us the story, your timing and, and the value to the community, and I'd be bringing that back to council. It's not the typical, this is not a typical land process, because I don't believe the uh, highest bid, uh, you know, will, will uh, provide the social housing or supportive housing or something, you know, uh, uh, of that uh, agency of client. Uh, so I think council will have, uh, I hope, uh, two or three very interesting proposals to consider, and it won't be about price. It'll be about uh, community value. But we'll see if approved tonight to go forward.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. I have councillor Ball.
Thank you. So this will be written in a way that we are not just selling this land, and we are ensuring that it is going to livable wage jobs or affordable, affordable housing, and not just going to a developer in the future. That it's going to create homes that people can afford. We are writing it in a specific way that will actually bring that to fruition.
Campbell?
Through you to councillor Ball. That's what's written in the report, and that is the intent.
Thank you. Are there any further questions from council regarding this? Yes, uh, sorry, councillor Meredith.
Thank you, uh, uh, through your mayor con to Mr. Campbell. Um, I just, um, just a little bit more, um, information on, uh, we bought the land for four hundred and ninety-nine thousand, I believe. And, and you're, you're stating that we probably won't get, get the cost recovery on that. We're going to be offering it a discount to, um, potential developers. And you're, you're outweighing that the costs to the, to the municipality were far away the, the gifting of the land. Is, is that what normal practices would be for a township or a municipality?
Mr. Campbell?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair. That's what the, the RFP will tell us. You know, we, we do know, or I put it this way, every time I've had a developer come in who wants to provide social housing, uh, uh, or some type of a low-income housing, they always ask the municipality to pony up and throw some money on the table. So I would expect if that's the client, if that's the type of developer we're chasing, we'll see requests like that. Some might want a little, some might want a lot. Uh, I don't know, uh, and uh, you know, but every other municipality that I'm aware of, when uh, you know, a, a group wants to come in and provide low-income housing, or as an example, they do ask the municipality to uh, waive fees, throw in, discount the land, uh, waive development charges even before Bill twenty-three required it to be done. So I don't know what the ask will be, um, but that's what, that's why this RFP is going to be different, and it'll be tell us upfront your story of what you're going to do, your experience in bringing such a development. Um, you know, other, otherwise it is to councillor Ball's point, uh, you know, we're just looking at uh, highest price, and we know the highest price is not going to be affordable housing. It'll just be straight uptown houses and high rises.
A follow-up to Mr. Meredith's?
Thank you. Um, so if, so are we basing on, on market val, we'd base it up, base it on market value, then discount it from there? Uh, current market value? Is that normal, or do we just look at our, the, what we, what we paid for it and then discount it from there? I'm just wondering the mindset.
Through you, uh, Deputy Mayor. I have no idea what they're gonna ask for. You know, but this is going to, on our, we're basically saying we have a piece of property that uh, we would like it to be used in this fashion. And is anybody interested? And some might say, I'm interested for nothing. Some might be interested at paying us full market value, and some might be interested at somewhere in between. Uh, it's really, we're, we're not stating what the value of the property is. We're saying we have these, this many acres of land with this zoning on it. Uh, tell us if you're interested in uh, doing something to help our community.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Are there any further questions? Mayor Gordon?
Just to follow up on that, so almost that exact same question was asked by the Affordable Housing Committee, as I recall. I wasn't on it, but I used to watch it on YouTube. And at the time, after the purchase, really nobody at that time really expressed any interest. The only people that were really interested were just buying it, right, to put whatever on it. Could be an apartment building, twenty stories high, commanding views around, you know, probably Sea Georgian Bay. Would that be a terrible thing for the town of Midland? It wouldn't block anybody's sightlines, and there'd be all kinds of taxes coming from it, and unless we're prepared to wade down the conclusionary zoning path where we mandate that X number of units be affordable. Uh, right now, before we consider just kind of throwing it into the MLS and getting highest price, staff is recommending that we basically put the bait on the hook and drop it back into the pond and see what the development community comes back with. And I'll, just to tie this into Midland Bay Landing, that's basically exactly what we're doing with that property too. We're not listing it for a price. It's best use case. Who's going to bring the most bang for the buck to the community? The parameters for Midland Bay Landing is that, you know, just under thirty percent needs to be parked, and all eleven hundred meters need to be publicly accessible. But everything else is left up to the developer to dream up, and then we, as a collective, the whole town and council gets to vet those submissions and find the best case. So Mr. Campbell's approach to this piece of property is effectively, I think, what we're going to see, what we're doing in Midland Bay Landing, but on a much smaller scale. And if that doesn't yield any And if that doesn't yield any results, everybody comes to the table going, yeah, we want the land for free and we're going to build this. And oh, by the way, you're going to have to pay development charges too and everything else. That juice may not be worth the squeeze and we may opt at the end to go, uh, we're not doing any of these bad boys. Put her on MLS and highest price gets it and someone builds some housing for God's sake. Right? So this is uh, I think that's the nicest approach first, because it's the one that gets us what we really want, which is affordable housing in our community. But with the times being as they are, if that doesn't work, then uh, you know, I would expect we'd see Plan B come before us. This term to uh, you know, divest that land for the best price we could get for it. And then hopefully. Cause we can't make developers put shovels in the ground, get through all the planning. Get rid of natural heritage on it, you know, wherever it's not needed to be. And get shovels in the ground. It's all we can do is hope. That's the frustrating part about what we're doing. Cause we can't actually compel the developers to put shovels in the ground. But step one, surplus. Which unfortunately is going to be a recurring theme tonight, but step one is surplus. So. That's uh, what we're presented with and I, I like this approach because we, it was many years ago that we last put that. That worm in the water and we didn't get any, any real nibblers for it. So it's worth a try again now.
Uh, tha- thank you, uh, your worship. I have Counselor Ball again.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify on why I wanted the wording to be so important. Um. Mentioning Midland Bay Landing. I think we settled on public space, not parkland. That's why I wanted to be clear on the wording here as well. That we are very clear to what we're agreeing to.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Campbell, any comments on that?
The now in the. I don't know. I am speaking directly into the mic, but it's going on and right. Okay, we'll try another mic. The uh, in, in the report, uh, you know, the. Things I, I, I stated that would be in, in the RFP as, you know, a number of housing units. Describe how they plan to make the units financially affordable. Describe the community benefits for institutional or supportive housing. Permanent job creation, timing, uh, when occupancy will occur. Any additional requests from the town that they may have a financial impact. Any commercial uses, company history of similar projects and then bid price for the property. So. Those are the elements that we put, build into the RFP uh, to try and uh, obtain the story. Of what they plan to do versus if it was just an MLS sale, it's, you know, high price and that's it. So. This, this, the, the challenge always is, you know, as the example, uh, a developer wants the modular housing on land lease. How would you compare that concept and say they offered uh, $400,000? I'm just throwing numbers out there. How would you compare that to a affordable housing proposal that offered 400,000? Versus how would you uh, deal with someone who wanted to deal with uh, institutionalized children? Uh, who offered $150,000? And those are the types of discussions that, that developers are, are talking about. Or, you know, just a person who wants to build uh, uh, townhouses. Uh, that will offer 700,000 for the property. So really what this is, this RFP will say is we're not interested in the townhouse. Development. That is, so we'll say that in this RFP. We're interested in these other types of, of uses. And expecting that we, or I'm expecting that, you know, it, it isn't about high pri- the highest prices. What is the, you know, if it's affordable housing, what's that market model look like? Cause that's always our challenge, uh, that Steve has on, on every uh, site plan when they say we're going to have some attainable housing. In our, in our subdivision approval. Well, what the heck does that mean? So we're trying to, this is. It'll be interesting. I don't know how I'm going to write it yet. It's, I gotta figure out how I'm going to do it. But the goal is. Doing something different to get a different result. Cause if we keep doing the same thing, we'll be exactly where we are.
Thank you for explaining that. I, I have the report and I, I do see all the suggestions and that, that's just what they are in our report, the suggestions. That's, I just wanted to be very clear that that's why I'm bringing it up to have the wording specific. So I, I appreciate that you're on that and that that is going to be. A guaranteed thing in the proposal and not just the suggested use of the property. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Counselor Ball. Any further questions? If not, I'm going to uh, call for um, the motion. You heard the motion? That was uh, moved by Counselor Reese and seconded by Counselor Meredith. Seconded. Um, all in favor? Any opposed? That's carried. Thank you for that healthy discussion on uh, Palm Beach Road. They're coming out with a new bill called High Density. Bill quicker. In 2024. No, I'm just kidding. We, we, we only have a bylaw that has 12 stories. So anyway, uh, folks, if we're uh, moving on to the next consent ag- agenda item. Uh, I need a mover on this and I'll read the motion. Do I, do I have a mover? Counselor Meredith? Second, do you have a seconder? Uh, oh, sorry. Counselor McDonald, did you second that? I'm sorry. Counselor McDonald. I will read the motion. That staff report CSR dash 2023 dash 99, 89, sorry. Town Official Plan Amendment Number One, Phase One Implementation Date October the 18th. 2023 be received and that a bylaw as attachment number one. To adopt Official Plan Amendments Number One, Bylaw 2023. Dash 59 substantially in the form included as attachment one. To report CSR 2023 dash 89 be enacted and. That the town of Midland Pre-Consultation Bylaw, Bylaw Number 2023 dash 61. Substantially in the form included as attachment two to re- to report CSR 2023 dash. 89 be enacted and. That the attachment draft terms of reference substantially in the form included. As attachment three be endorsed and be revised by staff as required and. That bylaw 2023 dash 60. Delegation of Administrative Signing Authority amends bylaw. 2022 Attachment Five be enacted to allow. The Executive Director, Community and Growth remove holding provisions as specified. You heard the motion? Is, is on the floor for discussion. And I will open up the, the floor. Are there any questions from counselors regarding this? I have Counselor McDonald. Counselor McDonald?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor Cotton. Um, I did submit some questions. And that, and then I'm looking at the report again and I'm saying, where did my questions come from? The, at least the first one regarding the date. That it was referring to the report October the 18th, but it was actually. The, the date of the report is November the 8th. That was corrected? Or am I losing it? Is my first question.
I will ask, uh, staff, Mr. Parkinson, do you have a, oh, I'm sorry. Uh, Madam Clerk.
Thank you Deputy Mayor to Counselor McDonald. Yes, we corrected it and then we reattached the report. It was just a minor. Um, the report was going to go October 18th, so we did change it to the November 8th date.
Thank you for reassuring that I'm not losing it. Um, and then my second question. St- state the bylaw 2023 dash 59, number two. States make application to the County of Simcoe for approval. For some reason, I thought. This step was eliminated by bill 23 or another such bill where we could just. Make, we didn't have to apply.
Thank you, uh, Counselor. I'm going to ask the, our planning department, Mr. Parkinson, the director, to answer this. Uh, you have the forester?
Uh, thank you Deputy Mayor. So with bill 23, there was regulations that were being proposed and through other various provincial policies that would eliminate the county. From planning decisions. Uh, that has not come into full force in effect. Uh, the anticipated date that we're hearing is. Uh, the December of 2024. So right now, we are still required to circulate to the county. And the county is the final approval authority. The director at the county has delegated authority, like we have delegated authority here for certain planning approvals. So this may fell, fall under his delegated authority. To approve and it may not come forward to county council. So uh, should council support this OPA, we would then send it off to the county. And then they would then do their process to uh, to, to have it approved uh, at, at the upper tier. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parkinson. Uh, you have a follow-up, Counselor McDonald?
I just have one third question. But, and thank you for that reply. So. Um, just in the draft terms of reference, there's tree preservation and protection plan. And it stated that the applicant should be aware of the reg- regional and local tree bylaws. Um, do we have a tree bylaw? And if so, could you enlighten me with a number of it so I can look it up, please?
Mr. Parkinson, uh, through you Deputy Mayor. So the town does not have a tree cutting bylaw. Uh, but the County of Simcoe does have one and it, it pertains to certain size of properties. Um, the, the reason why we put the wording of regional and local is that if council uh, later on. In the future, if they wish to pass a tree cutting bylaw, then it's already incorporated into those terms of reference and we don't need to go back through and update the terms of reference. So it just provides the flexibility that should council in the future want to pass a tree cutting bylaw that we have that language within the terms of reference. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Does it answer your question, Counselor?
That does answer my question. I, I appreciate the replies and all the reading you made us do.
Very good. Are there any further questions from counselors on the floor desk? Seeing none? Oh, sorry, uh, go ahead, your worship.
This is the comment that this, this amendment comes after a lot of hard staff work. And if this council remembers, I think it was this, this council, when the original amendment was, you know, brought forward. Uh, there was, you know, literally a lineup of people with pitchforks, axes and planning tools. Uh, because they just weren't happy with the, the, the way it was being approached. So staff went back to the table after lots of consultation with them. Came up with the recommendations that we approved previously and this is the culmination of that, ready to submit. And you know, the, the credit goes entirely to our growth department. Uh, for not only negotiating peace with the uh, planning community and development community. And finding something that matches what the province is requiring us to do. That mitigates the threat of having to return funds, you know, because of uh, processes that might slow down the process. And also deals fairly with these applications to streamline them so that nobody's getting slow walk through the process. And quite frankly, we're enjoying the fruits of the labor right now and the great relationships we have. Uh, with, we, we repaired with some developers and that we're enjoying with brand new developers. So. It's a shout out to the, to the growth department, Mr. Parkinson and his team.
Thank you, Count, uh, your, your worship. Yes, Mr. Parkinson, you have a, a comment or response?
Uh, yes, thank you Deputy Mayor. So uh, as, as the mayor's pointed out, we did come forward uh, to council in December of last year with the public meeting. Um, you know, previous director did a lot of work in get, getting the, the foundation for us to, to at least build off of. Uh, we came forward to, to council in July, I believe it was with a, with a, our approach of how. Uh, our consultant, Tim Kane with SGL Planning was going to uh, work with staff to, to split basically the process into two. So. What this is looking at is the pre-consultation process, establishing the terms of reference. Updating the delegation authority bylaw because through recent provincial changes. Uh, staff can now remove holding provisions, which sometimes a hold is on there solely for the reason of a site plan agreement needing, needing to be registered. So it does speed up the process. So once this is in place, uh, we will then start phase two, which is our site plan control process. Uh, I do anticipate we will have more engagement from the stakeholders as part of that process. So we'll continue to have that dialogue with them, uh, and, and look forward to having their feedback on that process. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, any further questions regarding this matter? Seeing none? You've heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none, that's carried. Thank you very much. That concludes the items that were pulled from the consent agenda. We are now moving on to number 18. Notices of motion. Are there any notices of motion this evening from counselors? Counselor Post?
Okay, so my notice of motion is. The council directs staff to give regular updates at monthly council meetings on the progress made in the preparation of the RFPs. And ongoing status updates, updates for Midland Bay Landing. Located at 288 Bay Shore and 420 Bay Shore Drive, Midland, Ontario. And that any questions that may arise from council be taken into consideration for discussion at that time.
Thank you, Counselor Post. Madam Clerk, you, you've got that and it'll be. Moved on till a, a later date with, with the response. Is that correct? Yes.
Yes, that's correct.
Are there any other notices of motion to be sent this evening from counselors? Seeing done, we will move on now to the next item. Thank you, Madam Clerk for recording that. We are under general announcements, number 19. Are there any general announcements? I see two hands. I have Counselor Ball and Mayor Gordon, Counselor Ball.
Thank you. Uh, I had the pleasure of attending the NSGDA meeting, which is a group of. Uh, wellness and homelessness initiatives as well as. Uh, companies and not-for-profits that deal with food sustainability. And I just wanted to bring to light some of the things that they're doing that the community may not be aware of. So the fun, funding from Simcoe County was given and uh, it was a landlord incentive program. So 37 units. Uh, were procured, 30, 53 new participants, 13 new landlords. And 22 community partners were able to get funding from this initiative and be able to house people in our community. They're also doing a winter wellness kit initiative that they are trying to start in December, which will bring uh, outreach items to the community. And they have also been doing on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, they do outreach within our community for our homeless population and they've. Given, giving a lunch program as well. Just wanted to bring light to the hard work that's going on behind the scenes that not everybody would be able to see or be aware of. And on that note, uh, this food sustainability is a huge problem in our community right now. And the library, I was there today. They have uh, a library pantry. It's a stigma-free pantry that anyone can access. I was there at 10 AM. The library opens at 9:30. They were completely wiped out. They had nothing left in the fridge. And I think one item left on the shelf. So they mentioned that uh, anyone who has leftovers from Christmas parties that may be happening, holiday parties. Uh, that they can make use of, of leftover food, leftover sandwiches. Um, and just anyone in general, if you're visiting the library with your families or if you're able to just drop by. Um, you know, a package of yogurt goes a long way and they are using that daily and they are empty by 10 AM daily. So if that's something that you can give to. I know that giving to food banks is always a good thing and that's something that we should all continue to do, but just to, to realize that the library does have that. And that it's very heavily accessed through our community right now.
Uh, thank you, Counselor Ball. I have Mayor Gordon. I have uh, Counselor McDonald next. Mayor Gordon?
Thank you very much. A couple here. Uh, one is a, just a general invite to the community. Please join us this Saturday, November 11th at the Senataf. Uh, 10:45 AM as we gather in gratitude and remember. Ten forty-five A M. As we gather in gratitude and remembrance for all those who paid the ultimate sacrifice for the freedoms we enjoy today and the peacekeeping efforts around the world. Also, Rehab Services Waypoint is running a coat drive for people in hospital and those who are generally in need in the community, of which there are many. And that runs from now until December first. So what they're requesting are clean machine washable items such as coats, mitts and hats. And we even have a Dropbox located here at Town Hall. We're, we're participating right by our customer service window, which are the big windows that you, when you come in off the Third Street parking lot. And our offices are open Monday to Friday, eight thirty to four thirty, and would love to fill that box with your donations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Gordon. I have Counselor McDonald. Counselor?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Gordon again. First of all, I just want to share that why I'm not there is because I don't want to share my COVID that I'm presently battling. And also I want to share that I, with my fellow counselors, that I met with both Clerk Edgar and Mayor Gordon to discuss our procedural bylaws and express some of my concerns that the procedures were not always adhered to and to clarify the meaning of an amendment. We did have a party discussion and I still think that myself and I don't know how my other fellow counselors feel, but we could have a refresher course on, on our procedural bylaws. And the second thing I would like to do is express my gratitude to the staff for organizing the town of Midland Facilities Tour this past week. It was very beneficial to all who were able to attend. And I was in person, I was personally impressed with Midland operations. I can now defend our, well, actually brag about what we do accomplish day to day to keep our town clean and safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McDonald. I applaud your recommendation for additional training. You can always learn more. And it's, it's been a year since we've been working together. I believe that we can improve if we know the procedures and the steps that are required to, to run council. So thank you for that. Any other general announcements? Seeing none? We will move on to number twenty. I have a motion to close the committee of the whole and to resume formal council session. It is moved by Counselor Merritt, seconded by Counselor Post. As the committee of the whole rise and report. All in favor? That is carried. We are now in the formal session. I believe the, his worship will say a few words, so. And let's, I will be continuing. Your worship?
Yes, thank you much. I'll, I'll be brief because the three motions are moved by myself, therefore I, I pass the chair over. So this is really the Deputy Mayor show this evening. I have a motion here moved by Counselor Bald, seconded by Counselor Ball, that the recommendations a committee of whole for the meeting of November eighth, twenty twenty-three be adopted as resolutions of council. Any comments or questions? Seeing none? All those in favor? Any opposed? That is carried. Next, I have a motion moved by Counselor, hang on a second, I think this is, that's for later. Yeah, that's right. Because you've already given the things to Deputy Mayor. Fantastic. I will yield to the Deputy Mayor now because the next items are all motions. And as I move them, I can't chair the meeting. So take it away Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, your worship. I would ask the clerk, was the official motions available or was written on the the agenda items that I do have them here. Thank you. I guess I could make some motions up. It wouldn't be proper. Thank you. I, I have a motion here moved by Counselor Gordon, but I also need a second here. This motion, Counsel Ball. I will read the motion. That council reconsider item seventeen point two surplus land, committee of the whole, resolution twenty twenty-three dash seven, that the land at three forty-nine Lakewood Drive Zone Open Space be deemed surplus to the town's needs as discussed at its regular meeting of council with closed session held on March first, twenty twenty-three. You heard the motion, counsel? I just want you to be aware that this was, some of this was discussion closed, I, a closed session. I want you to be very careful how you respond to the questions. So specifically, we're dealing with this one motion. I will now pass it over to Mayor Gordon to elaborate further on this particular motion.
Thank you very much Deputy Mayor. So this is a, a motion that, that stems from a procedure or procedural policy that when council during its term makes a decision, in order to revisit that decision, we have the ability to table a motion like this one that can only speak to the fact that we are, I'm asking, or whoever moves it, in this case it's me, is asking council to reconsider that previous decision. The unfortunately, because of the nature of it, we can't really have a discussion or debate around it. We did that in camera, which isn't overly helpful for our community members, but it's the way it is when it comes to litigation or the threat of litigation. So consequently, in order to deal with the next motion, which we're, isn't on the floor, so I can't speak to it at the moment, this motion needs to be passed by two-thirds of present council members. If this motion does not receive two-thirds support, then we don't even deal with twenty-two point two tonight. So that's about all the discussion I think we can really have on this thing. We've already debated and understood what it's all about and why it's there. And just for clarity, the reason why this and the subsequent motion are on the open agenda tonight or were at my request. At a very high level, the town received, you know, effectively a threat of litigation, which is, you'll see that in our closed session is the rationale for going in closed session. And the output of that closed session could have very well been these two motions and nobody in the community would be any wiser unless they were following us in real time. Because I suspected that my, my subsequent motion that I'm asking council to reconsider would be a likely outcome of the in-camera meeting. I asked that these two motions appear on the public agenda a week ahead of time. So that everybody, including the residents that are, you know, proponents or impacted by this, would have the same amount of time to mull this over as our council would. So out of an abundance of caution and a desire for absolute clarity and transparency, I put my name on these motions and that is why they appear on the agenda and they're entirely in response to correspondence that council received and then had a confidential update on this evening. So just so everyone's clear, that's why they're back on the agenda for no other purpose. And I think that's the only preamble that really we're permitted to discuss about this without calling the question.
We have Counsel Post.
I'd like to ask for a recorded vote, please.
That will be followed through. This is a part A, part B session. It's like watching the Young and the Restless. You have to get part A to get part B. So anyway, you, you read, heard the motion? Those all in favor? Sorry, but that, Madam Clerk, it is a recorded vote.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, members of council. You've heard the question. When I call your name, please answer yes or no. Counselor East?
No.
Counselor Mc- Counselor McDonald?
No.
Counsel Ball?
No.
Counsel Post?
No.
Counsel Bald?
Yes.
Counsel Meritas? Deputy Mayor Conton?
Yes.
And Mayor Gordon?
Yes.
The motion's defeated five-four.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, you have a few words?
Sorry, I just want to clarify. It was a tie, therefore it's defeated. Four-four.
Four-four, okay. Thank you very much. We will not continue with motion, the second motion of part B. So we will move on now to the third motion, which is has to do with the Severn Sound Environmental Association. I have a motion here by Counselor Gordon, seconded by, are you a seconder? Counselor East? Okay, whereas in nineteen ninety-seven, council and neighboring municipalities entered, entered an agreement to establish the Severn Sound Environmental Association for the continuation of the Severn Sound Remedial Action Plan Initiative to Restore, Protect and Sustain a Healthy Environment in the Severn Sound Area and whereas in two thousand and three, the Severn Sound Watershed was delisted from the International Joint Commission's list of the Great Lakes Areas of Concern because it reached its goal of improving the water quality of Severn Sound and whereas in two thousand and nine, the Severn Sound Environmental Association was created as the Municipal Service Corporation and whereas the scope of work and required budgets have significantly increased in recent years. Now, therefore, be it resolved that council requests the Severn Sound Environmental Association's Board of Directors to prepare a budget and work plan that only includes activities and functions that are legislatively required under federal and or provincial regulations for consideration for two thousand and twenty-four. You've heard the motion. I will open this up now for discussion by council. But I'll have Mayor Gordon say a few words regarding this motion that he crafted it. Mayor Gordon?
Thank you Deputy Mayor. So this motion has been circulated to our peers in our Simcoe so that all councils are having the same conversation, exact same word. And the rationale is that S S E A, as you're going to see at budget time, is coming with a twelve percent increase to their budget. And you know, so that's a little shocking, to say the least. And this isn't an, this is not an opportunity asking them to justify their budgetary increase. That time will come when they stand and deliver it or A B Cs. But it is an opportunity for councils to understand a shopping list of all the services that they provide for the partner municipalities of which we're just one. The order of importance of those items or those services they provide and what percentage of their budget those services make up, effectively allowing us to perhaps have some input over which items that we choose to have delivered to the municipality so that we can try and get a lower increase on their budget. I had a really good conversation with the executive, the S S E A, so they know this budget's on the table. They understand the rationale behind it and that it is not an adversarial but motion. Nor is it a motion that's asking us to trigger the two-year exit clause from this, from the S S E A. Those are all things I wanted to make abundantly clear and just want to put on the record. What this is asking for is something we don't know. And that is what services the S S E A provides that are legislatively required. And which ones are optional and how much they cost? And then what say, if any, you know, much like the airport conversation, what say, if any, do we have over the delivery of those services and our share of the cost for that organization? And quite frankly, the only way to get that information is to ask it of them. So this motion is crafted to do just that. And with any luck, this will be passed by our neighboring municipalities, tiny-take, penitentiary. And as a chorus, we will be all asking for the same thing. The only disadvantage is that we head into our budget conversations far later than our neighbors. And a lot of them may have already had the budget pitch and a decision ahead of our opportunity. And then we run into the, the potential of us making a budget decision. Assuming we even have the ability to say no to twelve percent. We may not and it may be too late. But as soon as I became aware of what was coming down the pipe, I had a conversation with staff. What's the best way to put this into an ask of the S S E A? They know it's coming. I think they're primed and ready and they're looking forward to the opportunity to, I won't use, maybe I should use the word justify, but to explain to us the value that we get from S S E A and why the funds are so critical. And what if any changes we could make to their the services they provide us and how those services are funded. So this motion's effectively asking for a report and some clarity around our ability to have some say over the asks year after year. Or is this kind of like our policing bill where you get zero say? They slide the bill across the table, you pay it. And there just isn't any other choice. That's not a really palatable response. That's not one they gave me. But they also couldn't be clear on how one municipality could pick and choose the services. We need to almost beat all of the municipalities. I think there's eight of them or so that make up S S E A. So this is a complex conversation and given our budgetary pressures, I think an important one. And so I'm seeking council support for this.
Thank you, Mayor Gordon, for that update and background information. Are there any questions from counselors regarding this particular motion on the S S E A regarding continuation? Any questions? Seeing none? You heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none, that's carried. Thank you very much. I will now pass this over to the mayor for conclusion of the formal session. We're into number twenty-three bylaws. Your worship?
Thank you very much Deputy Mayor. I've got a motion here moved by Counselor Pro, seconded by Deputy Mayor Conton at the following four bylaws. Bylaw twenty twenty-three dash fifty-nine, adopt amendment number one to the town of Midland Official Plan. Bylaw twenty twenty-three dash sixty, amend bylaw twenty twenty-two dash twenty-nine, being a bylaw to provide for the delegation of administrative signing authority by council. And bylaw twenty twenty-three dash sixty-one, require an applicant to consult with the municipality prior to making an application under the Planning Act and to repeal bylaw twenty thirteen dash eighty-four. And lastly, bylaw twenty twenty-three dash sixty-two, authorize the entering into a collective agreement with the International Brotherhood of Electoral Workers, the I B W Local six-three-six effective February first, twenty twenty-three to January thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven, be passed and enacted. Any questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? And that is carried. Next, I have a motion moved by Counselor Pro, seconded by Deputy Mayor Conton, that bylaw twenty twenty-three dash sixty-three, being a bylaw to adopt the proceedings of regular council meeting with closed session held November eighth, twenty twenty-three, be passed and enacted. All those in favor? Any opposed? And that is carried. And last but not least, moved by Counselor McDonald, seconded by Counselor Merritt, that the regular meeting of council with closed session adjourned at seven forty-nine P M. Beautiful time. All those in favor? That's carried and we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.